There are two more policies for your review tonight for a meeting. Just asking you to take a look at them. First one is policy A O E. Both these policies are out of a section in our policy book that relates to personnel. This particular one deals with workers' compensation and basically just make sure that the board's policy is in line with current state law. I'll highlight the significant differences. In the third paragraph, there's an addition where an employee must notify the district's workers' compensation person within 20 days of an injury or 30 days of a repetitive trauma injury. This again is a recent change within the last couple of years, I believe, to the law. And there's also a testing requirement where when an injury is incurred, the district can require a test for chemical use. If the employee would choose not to participate in that test, if it's requested, that would disqualify them from eligibility for workers' benefits. And that's in the fifth paragraph, sixth paragraph. And then the last piece in the very end of the policy, the district does have the opportunity in these situations to be able to choose the position that the employee works with. And if an employee chooses to use a position other than the one that we select, there's a limit of $500 as a maximum benefit. But they would be entitled to. Actually, again, that's been our practice. I think this is just one of those policies that haven't quite kept up with the changes in practice in the statute of the state. So there's a few minor wording changes, but other than that, that's the significant differences in policy. The other policy we're asking you to look at is policy G A R A. It deals with bloodborne pathogen exposure control. And basically what we're doing here is deleting the component that applies to conforming with the Kansas Department of Human Resource Regulation. We still will have the exposure control plan. It just will not have any state requirement that it has to meet. I might point out in both of these, with the workers' comp policy, Mr. Hogan and Melinda Rowland, who's our workers' compensation coordinator, as well as our payroll people in the business office, have reviewed the policy and they are in line with the changes. And then with G A R A, Polly Wood, who's our health services coordinator, has also reviewed the proposed changes. So if you have questions, I'd love to entertain them now. If you don't have any tonight, I know it's pretty riveting stuff, and you want to send it to me another time, that would be fine. And if we don't hear anything, then these two will be on the agenda for next time.
Can you leave it tonight? Thank you, Dr. Carroll. I've asked Dr. Athan to give us a brief update on school finance and budget.
Well, I am going to give you a Reader's Digest version tonight, in a way of an update in reference to school finance and the budget. Public education is about 52% of the state's budget, where the largest portion of their budget, any way you want to cut it. In 2012, the state legislature and Governor Brownback reduced state income taxes with the hope of increasing economic growth throughout the state. Even though the intent was honorable, the outcome is proving to be devastating. The state clearly has a revenue problem. In December 2014, the state projected revenue shortfall was $280 million. Governor Brownback announced in a lot of the plan to address the revenue shortfall, and many state agencies endured significant reduction, KDOT being one of them, Department of Health. In this round, this first round, public education was not directly affected. However, the plan did cut 58 million in state contributions to the Kansas Public Employed Retirement System, commonly known as CAFERS. In January 2015, the state projected an increased revenue shortfall of an additional $65.5 million, bringing that total up to $345.5 million. To address this additional deficit, the governor, on February 5th, announced a 1.5% reduction in the state's allotment for general state aid to go into effect March 7. Based on initial estimates from the Kansas State Department of Education, this budget action will reduce base state aid per pupil from the current $3,852 to $3,810, a reduction of $41 per student. The impact on Garden City Public Schools is estimated to be a reduction of $470,000 in general state aid in this current budget year. Reductions in funding in our current budget year poses us challenges due to contractual obligations that we have and purchasing commitments that are already in place. We already have our employees under contract, and we're obligated to pay them throughout that contract without exception. That's the law. We have a need to buy goods and services within this current budget that's been budgeted for this, and if we don't have that money, it poses us challenges. The district plans to adjust these reductions, address these reductions in state aid by reducing our capital outlay budget. The result will be some work scheduled for this summer to maintain our buildings simply will not get done. This district has a history of maintaining its facilities. Yes, we have a new high school. We have a new early childhood center. But the rest of our buildings, Chuck Comby can validate this because he's in and out of these buildings each and every day. These buildings take a lot of tender, loving care, no different than your home does. You have to keep them up. And I attribute the passage of the bond in 2008 a lot to the history of this district maintaining its facilities. Through the budget cuts, we're starting to see some chinks in our armor here. I sat down at a board faculty meeting at Kenneth Henderson, and they pointed out several things to me that need to be corrected. And they were right. It's an example of where the budget cuts are starting to affect us out there in our buildings and maintaining our buildings. These budget cuts are starting to affect us, even though we've tried to keep it as far away from the classroom as possible, we're knocking at that door. If I've heard ones, I've heard 100 times how we've cut library pairs. Yes, we did cut library pairs. None of those pairs lost their job, I might add. They were placed in other jobs. We cut those positions. We didn't want to. It wasn't a desire of the board, wasn't a desire of the administration. It's what we had to do. Any other cuts that you see forthcoming in the future are going to be painful. There's no avoiding it. Whether we're looking at possibly cutting administrators down the way as we move into next year's budget, looking at program budgeting where we drew the line last year, taking it on down below that line and recapturing about another 500 and some thousand, looking at possibly raising the LOB, the Local Option Budget, to capture a little money. And that's what we've done all the way through this process since I've been here. We've made cuts, but we've also raised local taxes within the parameters of the LOB. So make cuts, but also look for revenue. Our teachers work hard. Our administrators work hard. Our maintenance people work hard. Our bus drivers work hard. A lot of people are working hard to try to make ends meet in this district. I don't know how much tighter we can tighten the belt without hurting kids. I've invited legislators time and time again, when I've given testimony, to come and visit Garden City. Our local legislators, some of them have come. But our teachers are performing miracles each and every day in the classroom and are doing it within the means that's provided them. I hope our legislators are listening out there and understand that a lot of the problems in the state are self-imposed by the reduction of taxes. And doggone it, everybody likes to pay less in taxes, but not at the point where you're sacrificing services to the kids, to the community. And I'm not only talking about public education here, I'm talking about KDOT, talking about health services. KDOT can only take so many hits before we start driving on rough roads. I went on a little longer than I intended, but I think some things that I've said this evening, I'm going to feel better in saying them, and I'm going to sleep better tonight. So with that said, if you have any questions, I may have been glad to entertain them.
Dr. Athan, I appreciate your passion and your conviction for standing up for students in our district, and I appreciate you giving testimony and you're willing to communicate with the board on a regular basis, but with the community as well. Because when it comes time to discuss possibly raising LOB, I want our community to hear your passion and hear where you're coming from. And you're an excellent liaison from the state to our local district, and I appreciate what you provided this evening. Any other questions or comments? It's a sad place to be. We've got a lot of things to celebrate, and we're going to keep celebrating those things. But education doesn't just happen. It needs to be funded, so thank you, Dr. Athan. The next item is the 2015-2016 calendar update. And if I remember correctly, Tim and Laura are on that committee as well, and I know you've met several times. Who is going to be discussing this this evening?
I'm going to start things off.
You are, Dr. Bell?
We've got a group of teachers here that are going to share some information.
Okay, awesome.
So thank you for recognizing Tim and Laura and their time on the calendar committee. The calendar committee has been hard at it since October, and they have, about the first of February into January, came up with an alternative calendar that has went out to the staff and is currently being discussed throughout different buildings. So staff have an opportunity to kind of get an idea for how that alternative calendar would impact them in their building. The group that's here tonight with us is going to share some information. They're kind of an ad hoc group that is, has come together just to help inform the conversation that the calendar committee has had. I think they believe a lot in time for teacher collaboration, and they see benefits that that will have for our students and for our staff. And the alternative calendar, that's essentially the focus of that alternative calendar. So next week, Monday and Tuesday, our staff will be asked to vote the traditional calendar they selected in December against the alternative calendar. Whichever calendar receives the most votes in that election is the calendar that will be recommended to the board for approval at your meeting on the 2nd of March. And that's how the process is defined in the agreement. So Grant, if you wouldn't mind coming up and bringing your group of people that we'd like to share. I might also mention, Mrs. Stanley was a community member that served on the calendar committee, and I don't think that's why she's here tonight. If you have questions for her tonight, you should have her to sit over her way, I guess, if she'd like to answer.
Okay, well, my name is Grant Allen. I'm a specialized teacher over at Kenneth Henderson Middle School. I'm Alex Cunningham, teach eighth grade science, also at Kenneth Henderson.
I'm Janet Bartell, I'm the choir director, both middle schools, Kenneth Henderson and Horstken.
And we wanted to come here today because we wanted to talk to you about collaboration, about teacher collaboration. We represent a group of teachers from across the district, from multiple levels, that really believe that we can improve our school districts by implementing an alternative school calendar, which includes increased collaboration time. So we feel that working together, when teachers get together and they collaborate, it shows up increased student achievement. We started this conversation kind of last, last year, when we started kind of looking at it. What were some of the things that we kind of, we looked at at the beginning?
Well, we started off with a, because we knew that there was a conversation about having a year-long, a potentially year-long calendar happening there, and we really wanted to look into it. We're just big research nerds, so we like to do what's best based on data. So we are. So we're looking into that, and we really took standpoint of, well, is this what's best for kids? And we're going through Google Scholar and a lot of scholar papers, and we just kept coming back to the fact that, well, really just increased collaboration time was what was the key factor on every single one of the things that we saw that had positive gains. There was a lot of research out there that we went through, too.
Yeah, and so we're going to, I mean, we're talking a little bit about some of the benefits of collaboration and, you know, why we feel that it's really best for our community. Speaking of that research, I just so happen to have some stapled copies of a research document we put together. They include some of the research that we found and some of the benefits there. But the big things we found is that when teachers get together and when they share their expertise and when they share their knowledge with other teachers, what you see is increased student's performance. Example, a study done by Barry Dotchery and Weider in 2009, over 1,200 teacher leaders across the nation were surveyed to garner a national view on collaboration. The office claimed that the analysis of survey and interview data from teacher leaders provides additional evidence on what existing literature has shown is true of all teachers, that collaboration among teachers paves the way for the spread of effective teaching practices, improved outcomes, and improved outcomes for students they teach, and retention of the most accomplished teachers in high need schools. And so we found that statement to be very, very important, that, you know, that really speaks to our needs as a district. Do you want to take that next one?
Yes, I would. Pass it on to you. So again, coming back to what we were talking about, it's really, the research is in there. It's a lot of, just everything was positive about it. And really, Dr. Athan, what you're talking about with the budget cuts, and we're going to need to work more miracles, by giving us that two-hour time that's proposed in there, that is, it's going to be a huge world of difference. I mean, you know, we're going to be able to overcome a lot of those challenges that will be coming in, unfortunately, by being able to talk to our teammates and be able to work through a lot of that stuff at the building level.
Yeah, I mean, it's going to, it's going to allow us to, I mean, since we're going to have fewer resources, we'll have to rely on the resources that we currently have. That is to say, we'll have to rely on each other. We're going to have to work together to get through this thing here. You know, so increased teacher performance is going to lead to increased student achievement. One thing that we also thought was interesting, and it helps to retain teachers, to keep teachers in a district longer. The research shows that teachers, they need support from their communities, from their administrators, from their other teachers, and it just sort of makes sense. Especially in this community, when a lot of our teachers are sort of imported from elsewhere, having strong support is going to be key to keeping them.
And by the district document, it really shows that you care about that, that that is an important thing that you value, that we keep teachers here and we're saying, hey, we have this time for you, we really want you to have this opportunity.
And we already do, we do expend a lot of resources to bring people in, and adopting this alternative calendar, which has increased collaboration, is going to be an additional investment in those folks for really no cost at all. But the calendar simply rearranges the existing time so that we have more time to collaborate with one another. Is that okay?
Yeah.
My turn, my turn. We know that we would like our district to become a model school district, and there's been a lot of investment personally with the teachers in reaching this goal. A collaborative calendar would help the individual buildings work with their strategies. I come at this with a, from a different viewpoint, being an elective teacher and also being a traveling teacher. I know that there are many of the teachers that are shared between buildings or even on an overload. They are not, they do not have the time to get together with PLCs. When their building adopts a strategy such as RACE or working on the Quad D lesson plans, they're expected to implement those strategies in the classroom, and yet they never have a chance to be trained. They don't have the opportunity to discuss with other teachers in their content level on how they can more effectively use those strategies in their classroom. In elementary school buildings, I know that usually there is not another elective teacher there. So a collaborative calendar would give them an opportunity to meet with teachers from other buildings that are in their content level. I've taught at all of the levels, elementary, intermediate, center, middle school, and at the high school. And I know that in each of those levels, the elective teachers tend to be somewhat isolated. They don't have the same planned time as other elective teachers, and this would really, really help in allowing them time to get together with not only the other elected teachers in their own building, but across the district with other buildings.
And you know, that makes me think that there's a lot of teachers that already are taking time out of, taking out their personal time to get together and collaborate. I mean, they see the benefits of working together, and since we don't have, you know, a strong mechanism to incorporate that, they've taken it upon themselves to meet out of contract time in order to collaborate. And I think this alternative calendar would support their efforts to work together to better their teaching practices for kids.
For instance, my wife goes into school every Sunday for about three, four hours.
Oh, yeah.
And that's weekend time that I don't get to spend with her.
She's a scorer.
She is a scorer.
She cares.
I said she cares.
Well, when we had the in-service at the high school a few weeks ago, the pod that I was in, the teachers brought up a lot of concerns they had about implementing some of the strategies, discussions in their PLCs. And my principal was the pod leader, and I kept, I just wanted to shout out, "Collaborative calendar would help, collaborative calendar would help." She kept saying, "Settle down, settle down." But so many of the concerns that the other teachers brought up would be, I wouldn't say completely eliminated, but a collaborative calendar would help so much. Just the time that we had to talk about the concerns amongst that small pod was so helpful. And if that was something that could happen on a regular basis, I think would alleviate a lot of the concerns that teachers have in implementing the strategies that we know we need to, to make this a model school district.
So I mean, not only is, would collaboration benefit our school district specifically, but I mean, according to the data, collaboration just helps student or teacher performance, student achievement in general. And so we hope we've convinced you of that. If not, you feel free to log on to Google Scholar and see for yourself. But we just, we really believe that this is what's going to be the future for Garden City. We believe that this, that collaboration, is what's going to be best for our kids. And we wanted to share that with you today.
I appreciate your time. Thank you. So you're members of the calendar committee, you're not?
No.
No, you're just, you're just supportive of the alternative calendar? You're cheerleaders for the alternative calendar?
Essentially, yes.
Okay. So I don't go anywhere.
Please, we're here for questions.
I'd love for Tim and Laura to chime in on their experience with the committee and where they're at with this alternative calendar.
Well, I have to give recognition to Dr. Carroll. He really, he made the meetings fairly fun, actually. He always kept it on time. You know, when we started talking about this alternative calendar, one day was Wednesday and one day was Friday, and the group looked at, well, there was X number of people that wanted it on Wednesday and X number of people wanted it on Friday. And instead of saying, well, we'll do Friday because there's more people voted for it, he said, you need to step back and you have to explain to the people that want it on Wednesday why Friday is better. I thought, man, that makes sense. You know, because now you've got Wednesday, people understand why Wednesday won't work as well as Friday. And then I was very impressed by the elementary principals listening and understanding the high school teachers and vice versa, and understanding that whole process. I liked the alternative calendar. I think the success would be is that, and I might be mistaken, but I thought we asked the principals to go back to their school and talk to the teachers about what those meetings would be instead of, this is alternative calendar, and we're going to have meetings. You'll find out what they are when we get there. And I think if those principals went back and talked to the teachers and said, you know, what kind of meetings do you guys want? I think it would help that alternative calendar pass. But until that happens, because I think the concerns of teachers that aren't in favor of is, what are we going to do during these meetings? Are you just going to come in and talk, and talk, 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 and then the meeting's over? They want to have meetings, but they want to be productive meetings. I think if that, that meeting with the principal of the school's worked, I think it would pass fairly easy. Plus, shout out to the parents, Ms. Stanley and Tammy Roke were probably the two that were always there, and they always voiced their opinion as parents, and I felt that was very informative as a school board, hearing that other side instead of, you know, teacher and principal and Dr. Carroll's input. Then you got, you really got, okay, now that makes sense why you're thinking that way. So I enjoyed my time on it. I thought the meetings were very well-rounded, and these guys came and talked to us, and you know, it was very productive.
It sounds like we're keeping what's best for kids at the forefront.
Exactly. And that was, that was always the what's best for kids, you know? Why is Friday the best for kids? And then we went down the whole list of, you know, let's quiet out.
I go back to the first day of school in-service, we talked about, you know, our interest in making strides towards being a model district, and, you know, collaboration time is a key component in that. So, and I really feel like this is, this really needs to happen sometime very soon in order to go to that next level within our district. So, Laura?
I wasn't unfortunately as involved this year as I was last year with business and family issues, but the one where we were discussing, the final one where we were discussing the alternative calendar, I really appreciated all that was being discussed, and not just the passion of the teachers who were there, but we had Crystal Richardson from the YMCA who took this information back to her childcare committee to discuss what possibilities they could offer, and some of the things they were thinking about. We could offer a Monday through Thursday package. We could offer a Friday-only package. We could do this, we could do that, and hopefully at no additional cost to the parents. They haven't decided that, don't quote me on that. So, you know, and it's adding four more contact days with our kids for the entire year at probably the most minimal cost that we will ever see increasing contact days. You know, and it gives, and some other parents, too, who want to be able to do more things with their kids over the weekends, you know, a couple of extra hours to maybe do some of those things and have those moments with their kids. You know, and there've been, there was talk about, well, maybe we could hire a parent to hang out in our school. to hang out in our school for a couple more hours for the teacher's kids, and they could do this, and we can do that. So there was a lot of discussion about how to handle those two extra hours as a community of parents too, not just, we know this is better for our kiddos, but how are we going to translate that into what is going to help them after school too? Because we do have a big after-school problem too, is what we're going to do with our kids. You know, I'm, I think this alternative calendar is great. There's also the discussion of having once a month a district collaboration time as well, in addition to just building collaboration, which I think will really help especially like sits and stones, so they can get together and talk as well. And, you know, because being able to do that during a planned time based off of location is impossible. So, you know, I think it's a great idea, I hope that the teachers pass it. Because the way that I read the negotiated agreement right now is this does change things slightly of the negotiated agreement because of planned times and things like that and trying to even it all out through the course of the year essentially, so that everybody gets any amount of planned time that they need. So as it is currently being proposed, I don't believe we would be able to adopt it unless it passes a majority of the teachers, the way that I read the agreement. So I really hope that the principals are talking it up, you guys are talking it up, passing that down, passing it up, because you guys are right in the middle, so.
Well, we had the opportunity to speak to all of the teachers on that internist day that we had. We presented it twice, once to the, was it seven through 12, and then the elementary or maybe it was six through 12. Anyway.
We got the comment just about on Facebook. I shared it. So give it out to some of my teachers.
I got my book.
Any other call answer questions?
I did, I don't think there's anyone who disagrees that teacher collaboration isn't significant in terms of the benefits that it provides, but what was a critical and important conservative line was that it would not unduly impact the parents of our children. I think parents expect or need to have some stability and some regularity in their child's school day. And so that aspect of it, I think, was very important. I appreciate coming up with some, of an alternative that seems to be a little more accommodating to our parents, you know, for the 7,500 odd students that we have, that's, you know, twice that much in terms of parents and caregivers who are responsible for these students and a big impact on them when the students are not in school. And I appreciate the why, coming up with some alternatives, and I'm sure there's other organizations that will as well. But, but I, I think that part of it, that the impact on the community, the impact on parents, is really an important consideration for me in looking at that. And so I appreciate having that somewhat addressed in the alternative calendar that's recommended or suggested.
And Gina, just comment, I thank you all the calendar committee members. You're never going to come up with a calendar that everybody believes is the perfect calendar. But the committee came, they addressed the issues, the concerns that came up, they kept doing what's best for kids at the forefront of the conversation. And it may not be a perfect calendar, but it's a calendar that I think we believe could open up some opportunities, and it's a pilot. Essentially, if the, if the committee, if this passes, and we do it, it's doing pretty well, it may be tweaked going forward, or it may be something that the district says, we need to, we need to go back to more of a traditional calendar, but we'll never fully know until we, until we give it a shot. And it's awesome to see examples like these teachers who were not solicited in any way, but ask if they could come be part of the process with the committee and help give information to the committee, and then for them to see the information that they provided really helped the direction that committee moves and really what we want to see in the district. So, I hope that happens, it's supposed to work.
Well, I'd like to, Glenda LaBarber, the principal at KH, mentioned that the school district that she was at prior to ours, the school board mandated a calendar similar to this. Teachers were mixed on whether or not they wanted to do it. She said if they tried to go back now, they probably got the school board or something because they feel that passionately about this alternative calendar and the ability to now collaborate. So, I mean, it may have taken a mandate from the school board at that, at that particular location, but now the teachers have embraced it. So hopefully, I'm hoping it doesn't come down to a mandate from the school board, because I really want to see a majority of teachers embracing this before we try to do something with it. But hopefully, they'll give us a shot this year, this coming school year.
We also hope that.
I know we're guests.
A little plug in for Mrs. LaBarber. We did this a few Wednesdays ago, we're going to do it again this Wednesday at seven. We're doing some Twitter conversations, our staff, we're using this professional development time, but anybody would be invited to join in, it's hashtag GC Vision, and from seven to about eight, the topic's going to be the alternative calendar, so if people have questions or they want to provide input, they can jump on and I actually tweeted the other day.
Wow.
And you, even if you don't want to be part of the conversation, but you want to follow along.
Well, I appreciate all this focus we've put on this. This is something that I think is becoming more important every year, and the vote has become a little bit better for the alternative calendar every year. I really hope this is the year that we get over the hump and adopt a change and move forward with the PLC time built in. You know, we're, we just talked about a $40 base state aid for pupil reduction. We're going to be forced to be more creative with the time we have, and I think this is perfect as far as adapting to our financial crisis as well as maintaining a focus on student achievement, so, yeah.
Just a clarification question here. You know, I've heard a lot of the conversation and it sounds like the alternative calendar is kind of labeled the collaborative calendar.
Good, I like that.
What is the, what is the number one, and I presume that's the number one sort of benefit for that calendar, what's the number one concern?
Good question. What are you going to do during those two hours?
Yeah.
In talking, last year, in talking to some teachers who voted against it, they didn't like what was planned for those two hours. But I think once we get the time, then we can work on how are we using that time. But you can't even have that discussion until we really have time carved out, and then we can work at, we've got perfectly examples of great collaboration groups that are meeting on their own watch to do this stuff. So there's no reason we can't help these, this meeting time become effective if it's not already.
Yeah, there might be a list of items there, but the question really was, why would someone not be for this? What is the fundamental?
From a teacher perspective, for voting purposes?
Yeah.
Could I say?
Yeah, please.
Some of the ways that it was presented last year, and that's one of the reasons why we got together so that everybody gets the same presentation, is some administrators kind of put their own twist on it when they presented it to their faculties. So it was, this is the collaborative and it will be meetings. It will be meetings the whole time. The way that it's proposed this year is that those meetings will be structured. Fifty percent has to be collaborative time. The other 50%, because of taking away in-service days, that will be taken with only 50% of it. So it's more constructive time and more constructive as far as what can be done with the time, but it's in more of a specific pattern that has to be followed. So it's not just at the whim of a building. They can do with what they want, their 50%, but 50% has to be collaborative also.
Well, there've been a couple of different options that Dr. Carlin sent out too, and there's a list of questions and answers as well.